Happy Aloha Friday, everyone. Will the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs please come to order? This is Friday, February 7, 2025. It's 3:15 PM and we're in Conference Room 225. We are taking action on measures that were deferred till today. Previously, these measures were heard on February 3, 2025. First up on our deferred agenda is SB 1364, Making Emergency Appropriations for Law Enforcement Personnel Costs. And just note, we are not taking any public testimony as we've previously heard this measure. Chair would like to recommend that we pass with amendments. We're going to make technical amendments and change the effective date to July 1, 2077. In the committee report, we're going to include language containing the following. General funds needed for DAGs will be $2,480,509. General funds needed for JUD will be $4,673,604.673.616. And then the interdepartmental transfer fund ceiling needed for LAW at $7,154,125. Any discussion on the recommendation? Okay? If not, Vice Chair Wakai for the vote, pass SB 1364 with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Aye vote, yes. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Decourt is excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. Our next item is SB 1452. This is relating to the Uniform Controlled Substance Act. Chair is going to recommend that we pass with amendments. Per testimony given, a mistake was made at the federal level and was replicated at the state level regarding the name of the drug, so we're correcting the name of the drug. We're going to change the effective date to July 1, 2077, and make any other technical amendments. Any further discussion, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye with amendments.
Aye vote, yes. Senator Fukunaga, aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Decourt is excused. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. And our last item on our agenda, this was a joint with the Committee on Labor and Technology. Recommendation here in conferring with the co-chair of the Committee on Labor and Technology, we'll be deferring this measure. And I'd like to explain the context and reasons for deferral, primarily the impact to the ERS and special legislation. So, deferring SB 730. And that concludes our 3:15 deferred agenda. Great afternoon. It's still Aloha Friday. Welcome to the Joint Committees on Public Safety and Military Affairs and Health and Human Services. This is our 3:10 PM agenda. Today is Friday, February 7, 2025. We're in Conference Room 225. This hearing is also being streamed on the Hawaii State Senate's YouTube channel. A few housekeeping announcements in the unlikely case of technical failures. This meeting will reconvene here in Conference Room 225 at 3:00 PM on February 10. For all testifiers, including those on Zoom, we ask that you stand on your written testimony. If your oral testimony is different from your written testimony, the time limit for each testifier will be one minute. The content, including the hearing notice and copies of the bills and testimony, can be found on the legislature's website. If time permits, decision-making worker after we hear from those offering testimonies. First up on our agenda is SB 1612, Relating to Fitness to Proceed Requires an Appropriate Monies for the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation in Collaboration with the Department of Health to Establish and Implement a Five-Year Fitness to Proceed Pilot Program Requires an Interim Report and Final Report to the Legislature. And first up on our testifier list is Deputy Chief Judge Ronald G. Johnson from the judiciary, offering comments. Director Fink from the Department of Health.
Mary Ann Siede, the Department of Health, the Office of Administration, will you support this? And I'm standing on it.
Okay, DOH in support, stand under testimony. Thank you. Taryn Tomasa, Office of Public Defender. Oh, Mr. Ganadan, welcome.
Signing editor, Deputy Public Defender, hearing on behalf of my colleague, Ms. Tomasa. The Office of the Public Defender opposes this measure. We believe that it is not aligned with best practices as we know them over the last few years having to do with individuals facing mental health issues who are facing pre-trial incarceration. We find it surprising considering the numerous other measures that the state is discussing regarding moving these people out of incarceration and into facilities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Tommy Johnson, Director of DCR.
Romy Guidewell, Healthcare Division Administrator in place of Tommy Johnson, Director of Department of Corrections Rehabilitation. We stand by our written testimony and just offer the small addition that our primary concern with this bill is that it still would require these patients to be housed in our facility. Our greatest concern with the mentally ill is a rehabilitative environment. We would like them to be able to engage in socializing practices, be allowed outside of their cells, be allowed to integrate into a milieu that we don't offer currently in our facilities. The majority of the patients at the state hospital are misdemeanor defendants. They have nonviolent crimes, and they have not been sentenced, and therefore don't find that the jails would be the best place to rehabilitate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Johnson from HSAK Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support. And Brian Baker, testifying from Hiromaka, in support. That completes our list of registered testifiers on SB 1612. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify? Yes, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Yes. Thank you. Vanuatu Ordechak, I'm Executive Director of Disability Rights Center. I did submit late testimony, and I apologize. I never submit late testimony. And the reason that happened is that when I read the bill, I thought, well, there's nothing in here that violates the Clark case, so it doesn't really impact us. Clark is a case that we brought many years ago, which basically says that once somebody's found not fit to proceed, they have to be sent to the state hospital. This bill talks about people pending determination. And then I read the Health Department's testimony, and it's like, oh, no, we want to, we can do it and violate Clark. Or they don't think they're going to violate Clark, but they will violate Clark. So, it would be illegal. It'd violate the court injunction, and I'm not sure what they're thinking. I mean, frankly, I'm not sure why they would even say that. The idea of restoring people in prison, if you can, is a great idea, but under the law, they have to go to the state hospital, and that's basically why I'm here to testify. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to testify on SB 1612? If not, members, questions?
Yes. Stacy. Yes, you're it. Unless Tommy Johnson wants to come testify. You can come on both. Okay, both of you can come on. Okay, so I drafted this bill because basically I am mindful of Clark, and that's the reason why this bill is drafted, to refer to joint custody between Department of Health and DCR. Because, one, housing somebody in Hawaii State Hospital is costing the state almost $1,000 per patient per day. And right now, they are versus, I hate to say it, although it's super expensive, it's still $155, you know, 10% difference. Okay? But the reason for the five-year potential pilot program, and I understand you folks are overcrowded now, but I also know that you folks asked the legislator for more monies to expand. And what I'm thinking is maybe a delayed implementation date, when you folks have those expansion to look into. Because when I remember seeing you folks' requests for expansion, you folks asked for behavioral health services, right?
But that's for the Halawa Correctional Facility to expand, to expand the consolidated healthcare unit. So that is a prison setting and not a jail setting. So it would not take pre-trial misdemeanants and put them with convicted felons in the prison.
Okay. So we're only looking at the potential, because not only the $900, almost $1,000 per day at a facility that is falling apart, even though it's brand-new, we're also looking at the fact that Hawaii State Hospital does not have ACOs, which means there is, with the high vacancy rate there, there is, there's a lot of state hospital employees there that are at risk. Whereas the DCR, I would think, hopefully with a delayed implementation date, that you folks can try this.
Well, I think the concern we have is twofold. One is that we don't have the corrections officer staff. We have a vacancy rate of 30.4%. Out of 2,615 vacancies, we have over 700, over 2,615 positions, we have over 700 vacancies that we're trying to fill. The second thing is that why wouldn't just DOH provide a step-down facility in the community for these people, because they're not convicted yet? Why can't they, if they're offering to provide the services, to provide the manpower, to provide the care, then why can't the legislature give them the money to build a step-down facility in the community and create a facility where the environment is more conducive to rehabilitation and addressing their needs? Jails is $307 a day. The community beds base might be less. I understand that it's $1,000 a day at the state hospital, but there has to be a happy medium, and they are sentenced to the custody initially of the Department of Public Safety.
Okay. No, I understand that. And that's the reason why I drafted it, so that it is the joint responsibility. So they also are required to provide staff for those inmates who are, you know, who are violent and have a, sorry, they're 704, right? Would you folks consider that for delayed implementation date work out with Department of Health, the kind of joint custody arrangement? Which requires them to provide staff, because both of you folks have staff, the vacancy problems.
And if I may, I understand the spirit of this bill, and I see where everybody is really asking us to come together as the two departments to manage this population better. In the short time, we had to kind of like unpack what a pilot project would actually look like. The two things that really did hang me up, and I'm happy to share, which is kind of why I did highlight, is the environment at OTRPC is still not a healthy environment. We often get patients back from HSH that they've stabilized, and they decompensate pretty quickly for us. They'll refuse meds, they end up in special holding on suicide watch. It's not unfrequent that we backslide very quickly, because being locked in a 10x10 cell, getting out for one hour a day is not necessarily healthy for them. We're not happy about that environment, but those are the cells, that's the space that we have to offer. We looked at the census that we both have that we share right now. We have 20 who are violent that we hold awaiting 704s, and they have 60, which is 80. It's two housing units total. So that means that Department of Health would be responsible for between 80 to 90 patient services. And I had concerns then on how do we get DOH in-house to take care of inmates that we already don't have good access to, between lockdowns, meals, head counts? We only have a few hours each day to pull them out for assessments, medical, mental health services, programming, all of that. So if you add the Department of Health staff with your card to service them as well, we've now limited the amount of access that they would normally have in their own facility. So that's the, those are the two, like, really, when I really tried to imagine how this would roll out, those are the two things that I couldn't imagine, how to get over within my facility.
Okay. So I agree with you. I think the ideal would have a step-down facility, and we tried that two years ago with the transition to Leahi, but it's not working. Okay? My request is, can you folks, and frankly, the idea behind the joint custody because of the Clark consent order, this was the Attorney General's suggestion to us, because they don't have ACOs, they don't really have the capacity to handle violent 704 people. So my request, Chair, is to just keep it alive at least until conference, and hopefully we can work out some kind of solution between both of you folks.
But I suggest we look at our planning and design for the OTRPC and include something like this space for that in a new building. I think that is doable for us.
And I've seen that on the mainland be successful.
Okay. So with a potential delayed implementation date then?
Yes. But at OTRPC.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question. Senator Rhodes.
So, yeah, if you could stay there, I appreciate it. So do, I guess my first sort of basic question is, do you actually have any space available right now for anything?
Not to set aside for a different population. OTRPC is designed for, design capacity is 628. We have over 900 folks there now.
And we still have, how many people on the, in Arizona?
937.
So I guess it just looks, it feels to me like, I mean, that, in a sense, this is a success. It means that we're, we're funneling more people into the mental health system, and we're catching more criminals, and that's all good, but on the backend, we have no place to put them. Either way, so if we're going to have to actually build a new place to put them, or find a new place to put them, it seems like it would make more sense to put them in a therapeutic setting than a jail.
I don't disagree, but if it's the legislature's will for us to try to do this, it would be at the new OTRPC, because we can then put that in the design of facility and try to build a separate, it's years and years.
Even if we did that immediately, it's years away.
Correct. It would be several years away.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Chairs.
Any further questions, members? Okay? If not, I'll turn it over to my co-chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. So first up, we have SB, oh, thank you. Thank you. SB 1322, relating to mental health. First up, we have Deputy AG in support.
Good afternoon, Chairs and members of the committees. Ian Sooda with the Department of the Attorney General, providing testimony in support of this bill. This bill represents a comprehensive reexamination of Hawaii's mental health code with the goal of clarifying and enhancing existing laws. In the course of drafting this bill, we met with various stakeholders involved in the mental health system to address their concerns with the existing laws, as well as get input on this draft. And this bill was a result of that work. And we believe that this bill provides a useful framework that providers can utilize as we continue to develop ways to care for those dealing with mental challenges. So we ask the committee to pass the bill and to incorporate our recommendation addressing a typographical error oversight as outlined in our written testimony. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Office of the Public Defender in support. Deian Maderas, the judiciary, providing comments. Elima DeCosta, excuse me. State Department of Health, providing comments. Koyanagi.
Department of Health, sending out written testimony with a offer of minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Michael Champion, Dr. Champion, in support. Deian Maderas, judiciary, providing comments. Taryn Tomasa, Office of the Public Defender, are you present? Public Defender in support. J.C. McIlannick, Queens, providing comments.
Chairs, J.C. McIlannick, on behalf of Queens Health System, will stand under written comments. I just want to underscore the importance of the Mental Health Emergency Worker Program. We would like to see that maintained and in full compliance. And also, we're just really concerned about any impacts to our emergency rooms, which are already very, very full. So we know this has a long way to go. We're happy to work with the stakeholders, but I just wanted to underline those two things. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Health Systems Corporation, providing comments. Malia.
Hello. Good afternoon, everybody. Malia Sven, the HHSC. I just want to echo J.C. McIlannick's Queens comments. You know, it was about a year ago, I believe, that Queens, their MHEW came to our neighbor island. It has been a very successful partnership. They have created a flow, a communication, and a coordination that we very much appreciate. We did ask for an amendment. We are, you know, the bill as written creates a, that if they can't get ahold of the MHEW, that they can bring the person to us, and we just have to really protect our ERs. So we asked for an amendment on that. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have IHS in support. Christopher Thomas, are you present on Zoom?
Yes, I am.
Please proceed. You have one minute.
Thank you, Committee members. My name is Chris Thomas. I'm an attorney in Honolulu. I help IHS and Connie Mitchell obtain assisted community treatment orders through a program we developed called the Outreach Navigation Program. I am in support of SB 1322, as is IHS and Ms. Mitchell, with one proviso regarding the suggested amendment to an individual who is under a court order for assisted community treatment but fails to comply with voluntary medication. The proposed bill seems to indicate that someone who is already under a court order to receive assisted community treatment and psychotropic medication must be independently evaluated by the individual or law enforcement officer on the spot to see if they qualify for involuntary hospitalization under an MH admission. I believe this is redundant and is in violation of the court's prior ACT order, which has already found somebody to be dangerous, and therefore do not need the redundant evaluation of MH to admit them for violating the order. They just need to follow the order. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Angie Knight, Institute for Human Services, in support. Angie?
Yeah, please stand up. I'm ready.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Elima DeCosta, Huihualama, Pono Hawaii, in opposition. Elima?
Yes, I actually oppose any instances looking for the institutionalized or providing medication against their bill, especially if they don't have the ability to make that determination. I understand that there are challenges dealing with people with mental health issues, but I think that there are other ways that we can deal with the crisis, forcing institutionalization or medications on someone when they're not at immediate risk of harm to themselves or others, seems extreme. And I also think it's extreme to allow one person to make the decision and waive the liability for individuals who are providing this supposed support. It's just expanding the monies that these service providers will make, and they don't have any accountability for their actions. So mahalo, I'm in opposition.
Could you please state your full name?
Oh, Elima DeCosta, in opposition. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Okay. Louis Erchak, Hawaii Disability Rights Center, providing comments.
Yes, thank you, Senator. There are several provisions in the bill that I have no particular issue with. I mean, I think, reading the testimony, it's obvious that there's a lot of cleanup work that needs to be done. I think, unfortunately, this is a 70-page bill that was sort of dropped on everybody like on intro deadline day, and instead of being properly shared with stakeholders. But that aside, my opposition is really two issues. One is the carve-out for negligence on Page 11 and Page 48. It basically exempts a lot of entities for basic negligence and raises it to a gross negligence standard. There's no basis in law or policy for that. The larger issue is this order to treat at the state hospital. This is an odd, it's an odd procedure that a lot of folks don't know much about. If you're at the hospital, there's an administrative panel you go in front of. There's no court order. There's not a lot of due process. There's no rules that go with it. There are policies. Right now, there's three medical people. This bill reduces it to one. I don't think that's a good idea. I think the due process protections are minimal enough as it is. I certainly wouldn't recommend going to one.
Thank you, Louis. Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Rachel Wilkinson, Ohana Health Plan, in support.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. Rachel Wilkinson, on behalf of Ohana Health Plan. You have our testimony before you. I just want to highlight our comment regarding Section 3. We are supportive of the concept, but we believe it does conflict with federal HIPAA laws.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have HSAK in support. Brian Baker of Hiromaka in support. Mary Kawasaki in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1322? Okay, seeing none, members? Okay, come on up. Public Defender. Public Defender?
ACLU.
No, ACLU. Carrie Shimomoto.
Aloha, Kako. Carrie Anne Shimota, Policy Director for AC of Hawaii. Thank you, Senators. We, while we support the intent of this measure, we know that there is a commitment to help people in our community who are suffering from experiencing mental illness. But we have strong concerns, and we're going to be opposing this measure. When individuals are experiencing mental illness or substance abuse disorder are co-occurring, they still retain constitutional rights. And there are several provisions in this measure that are alarming. First, that continuing under assisted community treatment, we are not guaranteeing the right to counsel throughout that proceeding. Second, the involuntary medical treatment panel, we categorically oppose the reduction in the number of decision-makers from three clinicians to one single psychiatrist. Given the fact that involuntary medical treatment is so invasive and involves personal liberty, it is critically important to have three qualified clinicians to have to degree if it is necessary. The immunity from liability that is mentioned a few times, why are we having another standard for treatment of care of people, again, who are experiencing mental illness? We should have equal protection and standards. There also appears to be a violation of privacy-protected health information. We have concerns about the section that would require existing doctors, therapists, social workers to furnish information, including treatment records.
Thank you, Carrie Anne.
Thank you so much, Senators.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1322? Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Next up, SB 951, relating to child protection. First up, we have, 951. We have Kelly Anne Douglas, Kelly Mae Douglas, U.S. Department of Defense. Are you present, Kelly? Please proceed.
I'm here, Chair. Yes, hello. Good afternoon and aloha, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committees. My name is Kelly Mae Douglas, and I'm here representing the U.S. Department of Defense in support of SB 951. I will stand on our written testimony but offer a few additional comments. Following discussions with DHS, the Deputy Attorney General, the U.S. Department of Defense Office of the Coordinated Community Response Office, and local family advocacy program representatives, we have proposed amendments that would address technical corrections, clarify that reports should be provided to the military authority or authorities who have been designated by the respective military command, and require a corresponding establishment of an MOU with each military component located in Hawaii, to further clarify and delineate necessary logistics procedures, mutual roles, and responsibilities to implement this requirement. In addition to addressing important points of coordination involving CWS, local and military law enforcement, and the family advocacy program offices, during all stages of identification, response, and investigation.
We need you to wrap up, Kelly Anne.
Yep. Thank you so much. We are happy to continue to work with DHS and the Deputy AG on this. And I do have a subject matter expert here with me if there are any questions. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Thank you. Next, we have Kathleen Shiarana Tona for the Department of Defense in support. Kathleen, are you present? Please proceed.
I am here to answer any questions that you have. We look forward to, hopefully, assuring that this is meant to be a mutually beneficial arrangement whereby we both care for the state.
Kathleen, we need you to say your full name for the record.
My name is Kathleen Shiarantona, representing the Department of Defense.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we have Ryan Yamaya, Director of Department of Human Services, providing comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. I'm Daisy Hartsfield, the Social Services Division Administrator for the Department of Human Services. As written, the department does have some concerns. So our testimony basically, you know, extends our appreciation for the intent, defers to the Department of Attorney General. We have been working with the Department of Defense, as well as our Attorney General's office, to try and reach a consensus as to possible changes to this bill, and I'm available for any questions. Mahalo.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Deputy Attorney General, providing comments.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. My name is Lynn Yeomans. I'm a Deputy Attorney General, and I appreciate the opportunity for the Department of the Attorney General to provide comments on this bill, and we stand on our written testimony.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Military Affairs Council in support. Marilyn Yamamoto in support. Johnny Mae Perry in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 951? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on. SB 228, relating to excited delirium. First up, Taryn Tomasa, Office of the Public Defender in support. Next, we have Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support. Louis Erchak.
Thank you. Senators, you know, I'm a lawyer, I'm not a doctor, so it's not for me to necessarily decide what causes death in a particular case, but I do know a couple of things. The first is that the obvious solution to these situations is better police training in terms of de-escalation techniques. But it's clear to me from reading everything and listening to people like Woohee from the ACLU, that this has been really abused and misused all over the country, and that it's confused a lot of juries. And we have, we signed on to the Amicus brief that was filed in Sheldon.
And we have, we signed on to the amicus brief that was filed in Sheldon's appeal. And so you have these professional witnesses coming in and saying essentially, oh, he just freaked out. It's not because the police officer was choking him for 20 minutes. And so it's led to a lot of very unjust situations. Not only did people die, but the civil legal system didn't even allow them to obtain compensation. So we support the bill.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Ilima DeCosta, Hui Malama Pono Hawaii, in support.
Yes, thank you so much. Mostly, I wanted to thank the committees, the chairs, and vice chairs for holding this hearing. It's really important that the family has an opportunity to turn, you know, what was a tragic incident into something that can make change and help save the lives, because nobody should be dead just because of jaywalking incident. Mostly, I wanted to highlight that this bill would prohibit excited delirium from being recognized as a valid medical diagnosis or a cause of death. It would also prohibit police or officers from using the term "excited delirium" to describe an individual in an incident report, and also prohibits a party or witness in any legal proceeding from just testifying that person was in excited delirium. So for these reasons, that's the reason why I was in opposition of SB 1322, because I do want to make sure that the individuals who are making these assessments are medical professionals and that somebody doesn't die just because of jaywalking. So thank you very much for your support. I hope you'll pass this measure on.
Thank you very much. Next, we have John Wookiee Kim for ACLU in support.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Wookiee Kim. I'm the Legal Director at the ACLU of Hawaii. We support this measure. So Sheldon Halick, George Floyd, Daniel Prude, Elijah McClain, Adam Trammell, these are all individuals who were killed by police. And when the police came on and justified why they tasered, beat, choked, drugged, crushed, handcuffed, pepper sprayed, baton-striked, and beat these individuals, they all used the same excuse. I thought he had excited delirium. But excited delirium is junk science, and as our written testimony elaborates, no respected medical organization recognizes it. It's not in the DSM-V. The WHO International Classification of Diseases does not recognize it, yet just like what happened to the Halick family here in Hawaii, right outside Yilani Palace, the family was denied justice because paid experts from TASER, the company that makes the TASER device that was used against Sheldon Halick.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Please support this measure.
Okay, next up, Victor Ramos in opposition. Krista Halick in support. Bodhi Lyons in support. Micah Corrie in support. Gustav Silva in support. Carmel Stagner in support. Peggy Halick in support. Vince Halick in support. Donald Grumford in support. Julia Sherwin in support. Are you present, Julia Sherwin?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay. Virgil Halick in support. William Halick in support. Virgil Halick, are you present on Zoom?
Present here, Senator.
Please proceed. You have one minute.
Good afternoon, chairs, and vice chairs, and committee members. I strongly support Senate Bill.
Please state your full name.
Pardon me?
Please state your full name.
I am Virgil Halick, speaking on behalf of my son Sheldon Halick. Sheldon was a husband, father, and son, and a veteran who was honorably discharged from the Hawaii Air National Guard and who wrestled with the aftermath of PTSD, drugs, and other mental health issues from his past deployments. In March of 2015, Sheldon died as a result of a confrontation with Honolulu Police. Oh my gosh, what happened? You disappeared.
You've got 23 seconds.
Okay. Yeah, he was pepper sprayed 12 times, tased three times, before he was handcuffed and hogtied with several police officers on his back and his neck. The police claimed he died of excited delirium. This injustice is what spurs our request for change with the introduction of Senate Bill 228 relating to excited delirium. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next, we have Kenneth Lawson. Are you present on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay, next, we have Chantel Halick in support. Gail Kamitono in support. Frances Haney in support. Anthony Halick in support. Ron Lamb, AMBET's Department of Hawaii in support. Lauren Bonds, National Police Accountability Project in support. William Rodriguez in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 228? Seeing none, members, any questions? So I have a question of ACLU. So my concern about this is that we are doing legislating what we call junk science. But before DNA was attributed, I mean, like 10 years ago, DNA was considered junk science. And then if we're gonna... Yeah. We already have rules of evidence that prevent certain things from not being attributed as evidence, as medical diagnosis. In fact, there is already standard of, standard of, it has to pass medical probability.
Right.
Before it even is accepted. So why can't those rules of evidence already apply?
Well, we already have an example, because the Halick, in the Halick's case, they argued that it did not meet admissibility standards, and despite that, the evidence was let in, and it led to the really highly prejudicial impact on the jury, because, you know, it's not just one expert who came onto the stand and testified about excited delirium. It was three, two of whom have very close financial ties to Axon, which makes the TASER. Now, as far as the question about legislating around junk science, this doesn't come close to, you know, kind of any uncertainty, right? There are all the medical groups. The DSM-V excludes it. The World Health Organization's International Classification of Diseases excludes it. There's no controversy here. And our written testimony elaborates on the origin story behind excited delirium. It was used by, I'm trying to be tactful, but a medical examiner who had very racist views against black people. And he coined the term in the mid-'80s. And over the years, law enforcement agencies started co-opting that term and starting to train other city staff employees to kind of speak the term whenever they thought that someone had died, right? And so the problem is...
It's the phrase.
It's the phrase. And exactly. And I think the bill language is careful to allow officers to describe behavior, right? You can still do that. The issue is that the term, especially when you couple it with the word syndrome, when it has no basis in medicine, it's a complete misrepresentation. And so one subsection of the bill proposes an evidentiary rule that would exclude it. And if it gives, if it gives this committee or these committees any comfort, Hawaii would not be the first to pass a law like this. California passed, was the first state to pass a law very similar to this one or to this bill. And then last year, both Colorado and Minnesota passed similar legislation. So, you know, this would not be taking some extreme step that no other state has taken.
So my concern also is that, okay, I could see it as a medical diagnosis after you said the DSM. And I'm just accepting your word.
Sure.
Because I didn't look at the DSM, that it's not. And as a cause of death. But my concern is that this says, it goes on to say, shall not document nor testify to, and it defines, and it's not just the phrase "excited delirium." It defines it as state of agitation, excitability, paranoia, extreme aggression, physical violence, and apparent immunity, pain. When people in police reports, they say those things. I mean, are you all of a sudden gonna prevent them from saying those things?
No.
That because it's agitation, excitability, paranoia, extreme... And it works both ways. I mean, also, also somebody who is a plaintiff going after somebody who is in a state and...
I mean, the language of the bill, I don't think precludes describing behaviors and specific behaviors. The issue is the phrase "excited delirium," and these paid experts going around purporting to, you know, basically saying that this is a disease, this is a syndrome. That's highly prejudicial, and that's exactly what happened to the Halick family in this case, because, you know, having reviewed the trial transcripts and testimony, it was so clear that the experts here, their testimony was believed as truth. And right? And so what ends up happening is paid experts are saying, this Mr. Halick died from excited delirium, not from being tased three times, put in, you know, in a prone position and had a knee placed to his neck.
No, no, I understand that, okay? It's one of those things that I remember, if you went to law school, I went to law school, first year of law school, is bad facts make bad law.
Right.
And I'm concerned that if we have this broad bash, and I'm really sorry about what happened to the Halick family, but that's my concern, is that a broad brush then would prevent plaintiffs from using the description, not necessarily the phrase "excited delirium," to go after the police for showing that they showed excessive violence, excessive, you know, like Rodney King. You know, they, you saw, you want the plaintiffs to also be able to show this highly aggressive types of agitation. And are we gonna prevent their plaintiff, their experts, from using?
I think then the solution would be to narrow and clarify that it's simply the...
That phrase.
The precise phrase. I did not interpret the bill language to mean that you could not use any of the kind of descriptions that are contained in the definition of excited delirium, but if that's the concern, and I do understand, and I do recognize that that would be a concern. So the solution would be to make very clear that you're not prohibiting describing someone as agitated or what have you, right?
Right.
Or even in, or even in delirium, because delirium is a recognized, you know, that's recognized. It's really excited delirium, right? Coupled with this cottage industry of experts who go around the country in all of these police misconduct cases and defend, you know, and try and shift causation.
Yeah, I see that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chair, I have a question for Wookiee.
Sure.
So has the ACLU looked at other states that have passed similar legislations, for instance, California, noting the concerns of the Health and Human Services Chair in terms of the definition of excited delirium? And have you guys ever looked at that, you know, since laws have been passed in other states?
Yes, it's, haven't looked, I haven't done a word, word-by-word comparison. But it's my understanding that both, well, actually, I will say, we did suggest one amendment that would add a provision that matches HB 36. And that language comes actually directly out of the California law. But it's my understanding that this is modeled off of the California law, so it would be very similar. But I, but yeah, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe the definition section is broader, I'm not sure, but in principle, like the general principles are following what California already passed.
Thank you.
Chair. Chair. Question for ACLU. Would actually prohibiting the use of excited delirium, would that actually result in non-violent approaches? Do you have any kind of data that proves removing that term would actually lessen the, I guess, physical attacks, mental, verbally, those kinds of things? Because I feel like terms are just kind of universal. If it's not gonna be, there's gonna be something else. So I just want to make sure that we're actually getting to the root of the problem. And yeah, so any data that you have that shows in California and in any of these other states that removing this terminology has actually resulted in lesser violent attacks?
So in short, no. And I think part of it is the California law was just passed. But to kind of your broader question, the problem right now is that a lot of police departments train their officers to kind of invoke the phrase, oh, I think he has excited delirium, or train them on sort of detecting if someone, and in fact, in some jurisdictions, the police departments will say that if someone says, I can't breathe, that that is a symptom of excited delirium, right? And so, right, just in the way that...
Okay, we need to end this soon, so sorry.
Thank you, Chair. No, thank you.
You can keep going. With an extension.
Just in the way that officers are often trained to think that there's some, a gun in the waistband, right? Some jurisdictions, I'm not saying anything about how HPD or how Hawaii police departments do this, but that is the concern, is that when you are allowing kind of people to keep invoking this phrase based on something that has no basis in medicine, the whole culture sort of promotes and perpetuates it. So, you know, it doesn't, I'll acknowledge it doesn't directly, right? But it's about removing this concept from the lexicon so that it's not used and trained on and kind of invoked as an excuse to use excessive force and deadly force.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none. Moving on to SB 296. Thank you. Relating to minors. First up, we have Department of Attorney General providing comments.
Good afternoon, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee. Felicity Che, Deputy Attorney General. We offer comments on Senate Bill 296. As stated in our testimony, we believe that specialized education and clinical preparation for individuals who are examining and conduct, collect evidence are best suited to do the examination and collection of evidence pursuant to Chapter 844G of the Hawaii Statutes. These protocols help ensure that the victims are not further traumatized, victims know their rights, maintain chain of custody, and that DNA is tested by the police. We also provided alternative language in our testimony. And as to Part 2, Page 3, Line 12 to Page 4, Line 10, it might not be necessary, as currently, HRS 352.8 authorizes the Executive Director of the Office of Youth Services to act as a natural guardian of youth committed to the Hawaii Youth Correction Facility, and as such, provides consent, and so therefore minimizes...
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Department of Human Services providing comments. Hawaii State Nurse Center for Nursing providing comments. Maui County Department of the Prosecuting Attorney providing comments. Hawaii Association of Professional Nurses providing support. Sex Abuse Treatment Center in opposition. Lynn Costales Matzouka?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello.
Please identify yourself.
Yes, Lynn Costales Matzouka. I'm the Executive Director of the Sex Abuse Treatment Center. We are providing some opposition to this particular bill. It's a little conflicting for me on this, because we do support wider access to care for survivors, and that is very important, but we don't want it to come at a cost to survivors as well. The collection of forensic evidence from the body of any victim is a very detailed process and should only be done by trained licensed professionals that are trained in the collection and the preservation of that evidence. Part of this comes with collection of DNA, photographs of injuries, providing a narrative or obtaining a narrative. And then once you have that evidence, it's very important to be a good steward of that, to make sure that you are transferring it correctly, preserving it for your chain of custody purposes, and then ultimately crisis support that surrounds a survivor. For those reasons, we have some concerns over this bill, and I thank you for the time, and I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Victor Ramos in opposition. Darar Carlin in... Next, we have Victor Ramos in opposition, Darar Carlin in opposition, Marilyn Yamamoto in opposition, Nicholas Van der Wath in support, Crystal Akall in support, Johnny Mae Perry in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 296? Okay, members, any questions? Seeing none, can we roll to decision-making? First up.
Yep. Rolling into decision-making. First up on SB 1612, this is relating to fitness to proceed. Judge's recommendations to pass with amendments. We're gonna accept amendments 1 to 3 offered by the Department of Health in their testimony, change the effective date to July 1, 2077, and make any technical amendments. Any further discussion, members? Okay? If not, for Public Safety and Military Affairs with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye for the vote.
Aye vote yes. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
No.
Senator Decore?
Aye.
Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
So for Health and Human Services, same recommendation. Vice Chair for the vote.
Yes, Senate Bill 1612, recommendation is to pass as SD 1. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Senator Hashimoto?
Aye.
Senator Keo Kalole?
Aye.
Senator Favela, please excuse. Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So for SB 1322 relating to mental health. Chair's recommendation is to pass this with Attorney Generals and Department of Health amendments, if not in conflict. We're gonna also add in a defective date and technical non-substantive amendments. Need for clarity and consistency. The discussion needs to continue. I understand the opposition's concerns, but defective date pass with amendments. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Yes, Senate Bill 1322, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Four members are present. Any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, same recommendation for SB 1322 for the Committee on Public Safety and Military Affairs with amendments. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair, vote aye for the vote.
Chair, voting aye. Aye vote yes. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Decore?
Aye.
Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So for SB 951, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments. We're gonna accept the Attorney General's proposed amendments as SD 1. Any technical non-substantive amendments need for clarity and consistency, and because they're substantial amendments, we're gonna add in also defective date. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, voting on Senate Bill 951, recommendation is to pass as Senate Draft 1. Four members are present. Any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for SB 951 to pass with amendments. Any further discussion? If not, Vice Chair votes aye.
Noting the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations? Chair's recommendation, we pass this measure with amendments. Seeing none, heard none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. So for SB 228, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with substantial amendments. We are going to remove from Page 2 the phrase on Line 6, or for which the court finds that there is insufficient scientific evidence or diagnostic criteria to be recognized as a medical condition, and the rest of that paragraph, because as stated, Hawaii Rules of Evidence already has a standard as to what they will accept for medical... as a medical condition. We're also gonna remove Section 3 that changes the rules of evidence, because like I said, we already have rules of evidence regarding that. Other than that, and we're gonna add in a defective date, because discussion needs to continue. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, pass with amendments.
Yes, Senate Bill 228, recommendation is to pass as Senate Draft 1. Four members are present. Any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for PSM to pass with amendments, SB 228.
Noting the presence of all members, any opposition or reservations?
No vote.
Chair's recommendation, we pass this measure with amendments. No vote, Decore? Chair, recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. And for SB 296, our last... no one really being in favor of it, even though it's my bill. We are going to defer this.
I like it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and same recommendation for PSM for SB 296 to defer.
Okay, we are then adjourned. Thank you very much.